Good evening. The council meeting of November 19th will come to order. If you would please turn off our silent share electronic devices and stand to honor God and country. Father God, at this season of Thanksgiving, we praise you for the gifts you have so bountifully bestowed on us. We thank you for a community rich in natural resources, for citizens planted exactly where you desire them to be, and for the opportunities you have positioned us to take advantage of. Father, as we acknowledge all good and perfect gifts are from you, we ask that you gift us with keen insight, a passion to serve, and a drive for results on behalf of the citizens and businesses we serve. Thank you for who you are, what you've done, and what you will continue to do on our behalf. We thank you in the name above all names. Amen. Hand to heart as we pledge our nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Persons wishing to be heard on items that are not on the agenda, there are forms available in the back of the room and may be turned into the clerk to your right. Would ask this evening that Melissa Zornita, Tony Garcia, and Mark Hudson of the Hillsborough County Planning Commission approach the podium? Good evening.
Hi, good evening.
In recognition of the Hillsborough County City/County Planning Commission, who has partnered with the City of Temple Terrace to address long-range and comprehensive planning issues facing our community since 1959, we present a certificate of recognition. Over that 60-year period, the City of Temple Terrace has grown from a town of 3,000 residents to a mid-sized city with a population of approximately 26,000. To ensure the future successful growth, the Planning Commission developed the original comprehensive plan for the City of Temple Terrace, which was adopted by the City of Temple Terrace on July 18, 1989. Through extensive public outreach and participation, the Planning Commission recently updated this blueprint of the municipality's vision as the Imagine 2040 Temple Terrace Comprehensive Plan, which was adopted by the Temple Terrace City Council on January 19, 2016. The Imagine 2014 Temple Terrace Comprehensive Plan is designed to build a livable city that is a great place to live, work, and play. In the spirit of cooperation, mutual benefit, and to better serve the residents of Temple Terrace, the Planning Commission provides staff to support the City Hall on an average of one day a week. The Planning Commission has proven to be a great partner and supporter of the City of Temple Terrace to achieve and live by our overarching motto, "An Amazing City." The City of Temple Terrace congratulates and recognizes the Hillsborough County Planning Commission on its 60th anniversary of service to the residents of Hillsborough County and to the City of Temple Terrace. We are delighted you're with us this evening. Ms. Zornita, would you like to say a few words?
Sure. Thank you so much. Melissa Zornita, Executive Director of the Planning Commission. Just want to, it's a privilege for us to get to serve the city over the years with your long-range planning needs, and we look forward to continuing to do so. In particular, I want to thank you all for all of your support of our agency over the years. Councilman Chilura, you were our former chair of the Planning Commission and really helped right our ship in some tumultuous years. And Mayor Arado, you helped us reshape our organization with a new mission and vision. And so, thank you all for all of your support over the years.
Thank you. Can I ask Councilman Chilura, would you also step down?
Hold on, Melissa. I just, I've asked the mayor to give me the privilege to say a few words. And, you know, I served the Planning Commission from 2012 through 2016, and certainly, what you stated was sort of an understatement. It was very challenging times. But since then, the Planning Commission has always been a very strong partner for Temple Terrace. You and your staff, going back with Ray Charmante, have always been family here in Temple Terrace. And, you know, once you took over and your team, you certainly have raised the bar at the Planning Commission. You're always there to provide for us. Staff calls, and you guys respond immediately. And it says a lot. And you protect the future plan. You guys don't deviate from it. And that says a lot, because this council a lot of times looks at the recommendation by the Planning Commission. So certainly, we have a lot of respect for everything, everything that all of you have done. And I know Mr. Tony Garcia in the back, he's sort of undercover back there, but if you guys ever need a singer, the guy sings really, really well. But I just want to say thank you. We certainly appreciate everything that you and the entire Planning Commission have done for the City of Temple Terrace. Thank you.
Thank you all. And at this time, if Dr. Ray Madrigal and Florida College students accompanying him this evening would please approach the podium. For those who are viewing and those with us this evening, Florida cities celebrated and engaged citizens in the work of municipal government during Florida City Government Week from October 21 to 27, 2019. This week is promoted as a time for municipalities to provide and foster civic education, collaboration, and volunteerism. The Florida League of Cities encouraged all municipalities to participate in order to help celebrate what makes our city great. The City of Temple Terrace has joined with Florida College for three consecutive years to help promote this very important week. This year's event was held on Tuesday, October 22nd. With the assistance and encouragement of Florida College Administration, approximately 12 students volunteered to participate in the event at City Hall. Each student was assigned a role to play during the day, serving as the mayor, city council, city manager, police chief, fire chief, city attorney, and other directors. After a brief orientation with the directors, the students held a mock city council meeting in which pros and cons of real-life issues were considered. The mock city council meeting was a success largely in part to the students' outstanding job and investment, and in their innovative approach to devising viable solutions. Students participating in the day were fully engaged in the activities, and their contribution helped to make the event a success. By engaging the students in civic matters through the day's activities and government process, we are hopeful that they can appreciate and recognize their local government's commitment to service. Prior to presentation of the certificate of recognition, Dr. Madrigal, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, we're very pleased to be here. And Florida College is in the business of educating young people. They come to us from over 35 states and a dozen countries across the world, and we try to provide not only the theoretical basis of trying to make a life in the world today, but also the practical way in which to express service, including the service of government. And the partnership that we have had for three years has been absolutely wonderful. You should know, and this council should know, that all of the seniors that graduate from Florida College, which is about 190 to 100 each year, they go through internships, job shadowing, different kinds of experiences, and the number-one experience that's on their list when they take a survey is Government Day at Temple Terrace. So you should know that. And we're pleased to be a partner with this fine group.
Well, and we're looking forward to having more than just Government Day. We have internships available for your students, and I think our directors were so very impressed with your students, Dr. Madrigal, that just about every director, and I'm looking at them now who are smiling and nodding, would be more than happy to offer internships to your students.
We would be pleased to collaborate in that as well. Thank you.
I'd ask you to stay right where you are and come up this way. will include Principal Andrew Olson, Dr. Russ, who is our Communication and Resource Coordinator, Carly Pierce, our IB Coordinator, and Jennifer Butler, math and STEMs.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Jen Butler was going to join us. She also doubles up as our volleyball coach, and our boys' volleyball teams in the playoffs were in the Final Four. We won last night. We were excited about that, so she couldn't make it with us. But I did have two fantastic educators at Greco that are going to present. We've got two big initiatives that are underway this year. My name's Drew Olson. I'm the principal at Greco. For those that don't know me, and I'm coming up on my one-year anniversary. So we've had a lot of changes in the last year, a lot of growth, a lot of things that we're excited about. And so, Dr. Russ is going to talk about the Community Schools Initiative, and Carly Price is going to talk about our IB candidacy.
Hi, my name is Carly Price, and I'm a new resident of Florida as of June. I came to join Drew and the crew to be the IB Coordinator from Nashville, Tennessee, where I was also an IB Coordinator. I have joined this crew, and I'm super proud of the work that we've done. As of the beginning of October, we are officially an IB candidate school, an international baccalaureate candidate school, and we have started serious professional development with our teachers. And we are beginning to reach out to the community, and we will be offering some opportunities to listen to the community and to also educate the community about what IB is and how it will function as a partnership with the community. This year, we have partnered with University, sorry, USF. And Ms. Butler, who is not able to be here, she will be starting our service project with our eighth graders to start shifting our culture into more of a service-minded organization, and we will be building some rain gardens with that partnership with USF.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Sisler Russ, and we are coupled with the IB program to build the Community Resource Empowerment Center at our school. We are currently awaiting funding to have our food pantry by Feeding Tampa Bay. We are providing wraparound services on a daily basis, and we also have services provided for parents.
So that's just kind of what's going on and what we have to look forward to. We, I know, Mayor, we had a meeting in January, and one of the questions that you had asked, Cindy Stewart had organized that, and you had some questions about our teachers and our teaching staff. And so, we've got about 75% of new staff this year. Valuation scores came out from the district. VAM scores were released in October, and 82% of our faculty is highly effective based on evaluations and a VAM score. So we're really excited about the quality of teacher. That's a big part of the Community Schools Initiative, too. It's one of the big six pillars that we're functioning under, and we know that the quality of teacher is the most important in-school factor to help our students succeed. So we're excited about where we are and where we're going. So thanks for the opportunity to share with you, and we just really appreciate that.
Principal Olson, thank you. Thank you for your commitment to our community. Dr. Russ, Ms. Pierce, thank you for being here. Thank you for loving on our kids and supporting our families and the community. You are making a difference, and we're hearing the buzz around Temple Terrace. So we're delighted you're here, and we want to celebrate many more anniversaries with you, Principal Olson. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next State of the School presentation is from King High School. Principal Arlene Castelli will be presenting this evening.
Good evening, everyone. Again, my name is Arlene Castelli, the very proud principal at King High School, and I love that we let Greco go first, because it is a great program. Their success automatically affects how we are at King High School, because we have a lot of the students that come from the NYPD program, now that they're starting that middle-year program, will come into King High School as well. So some of them will come into the IB program as the diploma program that we have. Some of them will just come into our regular program. Either way, the more successful they are, the more successful we are at our school, because we get those students and we keep them within the Temple Terrace. So we, it is a great partnership. Ms., Dr. Russ talked about the food pantry. We also have a food pantry. We're one of the only high schools that we have in Hillsborough County that has a food pantry, and we are funded by Feeding Tampa Bay as well. So it's a great service that we provide. It's more to our students and our families in the school itself. We don't necessarily open it up like some elementary schools do, but we have it to our, we give it to our students once a week. They get to use that as well. But that's Feeding Tampa Bay as well. Some of the things that we're very proud of at King High School, many of you know that we have Dr. Graham, who is the Florida Teacher of the Year. Last time I was here, we were very proud that he was nominated as the Hillsborough County Teacher of the Year, but now he actually is the entire, over the entire state of Florida Teacher of the Year. And we're extra proud, because the message he sends is the message we know, you know, is meant to be heard. Music is very important in education, so we love his message. We're also proud of our 16 Merit semifinalists. That's a lot. That's one of the largest number in any of the schools, not only in Hillsborough County, but all of our surrounding areas. We have about the highest number. Some people have two or three. We had 16 semifinalists. So hopefully, all of those will make it to the end as well. We want to thank Temple Terrace for the grants that you guys have given us over the past, the last one over the past year. You gave us three grants, and our teachers were very thrilled about that. You helped us out with our science classes, with some equipment for them to use. You actually helped us with our social services, so our social worker could go out and get some passes, bus passes, and food hygiene products for some of the families that are needing it. And Tork, which is our robotics program, also got a camera that allows them to kind of, the robot to do their own thing. So we just want to thank you very much for the support. King really does appreciate all of you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for being with us this evening. And congratulations, 16 Merit Scholars. Wonderful. Appointments, there is one vacancy as an alternate on the Board of Adjustment. The sole applicant is Nick Strappoli. Would ask for a motion to approve the appointment of Nick Strappoli for a term extending from November 19, 2019 until April 16, 2022. Is there a motion?
There is. I move to approve Nick Strappoli.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, council? All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign? Thank you. Motion carries. And is Mr. Strappoli with us this evening?
No, I don't see him.
Do not see him? Well, thank you for your willingness to serve. Council, if the minutes of the October 22, 2019 City Council Emergency Meeting are acceptable, would entertain a motion to approve the minutes?
May I check for him?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any changes or corrections?
I have a question. I know I've asked this before, but I can't remember the answer. I wasn't at this meeting. Should I vote for this or not?
Did you watch YouTube?
I did not. So I don't know what, yeah, I mean, I know what the issue was, but...
Since you weren't present, you really could not vote effectively on whether the minutes were correct or not.
So do I just sign and don't cast a vote at all, then?
Right. Are you just abstain from voting?
So all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign?
And we have one abstention.
Very good. Thank you. Next, if the minutes of the November 5, 2019 City Council Meeting are acceptable, would entertain a motion to approve the minutes? Is there a motion?
I move to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
There are a couple corrections that I'd like to note on page 18. Would ask, as we looked at nominations, that the second for the nominations is reflected for Vice Mayor on Councilman Ross. It was Councilman Schisler who made the second. And for Councilman Donahue, it was Councilman Donahue who made the second. Also, on page 20, there was a failure to note the concern that was raised over a less-than-full-time employee being offered full benefits, and would like that reflected in the minutes. Are there any other corrections? Seeing none, all in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign? Thank you. Motion carries. Persons wishing to be heard on items not listed on the agenda, there is a three-minute time limit on all comments from the public. As speakers come to the podium, please state your name and your city of residence. During public comment on items that are not on the agenda, the city manager and directors present in the audience today do make note of these items and do follow up on items that are related to city business. This evening thus far, we have one card and would call up Connie Lee Hammond.
First, I apologize for not getting everyone a copy of the pictures that I have, because the pictures display more or less what the problem is. So I'll just hold them up, and I know that you've got a few up there. My topic is semi-trucks utilizing White Way Drive instead of Fowler Avenue. Addressed is the damage to the tree canopy, residential school area, and potential damage to residents due to low line wires. First, where these trucks are coming from? This is a picture from White Way Drive onto, and 56th Street. They are coming from the south. There is no sign for no trucks in this area. There is a sign from west to east, but not east to west. Picture number two, and if you watch, and I've seen this many, many times, this picture is of a truck going down the road, and what happens is, before the canopy of the trees here, they have to swerve to the left lane. If they fail to do it... Picture number three, they take down part of the canopy. Limbs all over the road, not a good situation. Number three, or four here, this is actually a semi in the canopy going through here. These trucks, I've called a few of these trucks, these trucks are going through the area and not utilizing Fowler Avenue. And this one here, excuse my finger in the corner, but you can see the low-line wires here. Usually, the lowest one is the cable, but the other one's electrical. My mother's actually had a fire when a garbage truck pulled a wire down at her residence. So if they pull down the cable wire, what happens is, the metal that goes shoots up off the roofs is actually what will pull out and actually cause the fire in her house. And it's very disturbing to see these semi-trucks this close. And I caught a picture of this one. I have been down here for code enforcement, utility, city manager, and I'm getting nowhere. I really need to stop these trucks from going down White Way Drive. We've got beautiful trees going in on the other side of White Way. I'm talking about the other side from the Dairy Queen. And we are destroying the canopy down this road. If you look down the road, you actually see where the semi picture is, in the trees itself. And this is not, in this picture, I believe, all five of these, or four of these trucks are different trucks. It's every day, all the time, they rattle your house, and it's crazy enough that they're driving through a residential area like this. We need to do something about this, monitor, get this off the road. This road has become a major traffic area from coming down 56th, 50th Street, down to White Way Drive and over to Boyd Fowler Avenue. Thank you. Please do something.
Thank you, Ms. Hammond. David Pegoralek.
David Pegoralek, 1534 North River Hills Drive. Heard a lot of discussion tonight, and rightfully so, that as you drive through Temple Terrace, that our roads need some attention. I would like to caution you, and I hope I'm speaking to the choir, that while overlaying the roads makes it all look nice and pretty, you can ride around now and see where there's been multiple patches on areas, and those patches are sinking. So we're not addressing the underlying problem. And I mean that figuratively and literally, underlying problem. The patches keep sinking, because there's something going on underneath the road that's making the patches sink. So when you start to look at these projects, I would hope, and I'm sure Troy will address this with you, is that we can't just keep overlaying our roads and make them look pretty for a couple of years, because the problem's going to continue. Those same areas are going to continue to fall, just continue to deteriorate, and we'll be back trying to repay them again. So if we have this money coming in from the tax, the half-cent sales tax, we should start looking at why, why is the road failing, rather than just putting a nice overlay over top of it? And some of the overlays that you look as you drive around the city, those overlays are peeling up. So something's going wrong there as well. So I would just, again, caution you as you go through each one of these projects to dig into what the underlying problem is, rather than just, let's repave it and restripe it and make it look pretty for a couple of years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pegoralek. Are there any other members of the public that would like to comment on items that are not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move forward. Consent agenda, there are three items on this evening's consent agenda. City Manager Stevenson will explain the items. Mr. Stevenson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have three items on consent this evening. Item 7A is a resolution to purchase a replacement vehicle for the Police Department's replacement vehicle program. The replacement cost for the vehicles is $91,000 and was included in fiscal year 2020 CIT Tax Fund budget for the purchase of two vehicles and accessories. An additional $13,000 was budgeted for the purchase of WatchGuard in-car camera services to be installed in the newly purchased patrol vehicles. Purchases of 2020 Ford vehicles will be made from Garber Fleet under the Florida Sheriff's Association contract, FSA 19-VEL 27.0. Vehicles will be purchased at a cost of $70,996 and detailed for $20,004 from account 160-1421-521.64-11. Each vehicle will require an additional purchase in the camera system from the WatchGuard, which is a sole vendor for us. The payment of $13,000 for the camera system will be made from account 160-1421-521.64-99. Total purchase of the two vehicles with all the accessories is $104,000. Item number two, 7B, is a resolution for the purchase of a replacement Marine Patrol vessel for the, for the Police Department. $29,905 was budgeted in fiscal year 2020 in the Community Investment Tax Fund budget for the purchase of this vessel. Three quotes were attained for the purchase of a 2019 Carolina SCIF vessel. Most competitive bid came from Sunray Marine located in Holiday, Florida. The vessel will be purchased at a cost of $29,883.50 and payment be made from account The third and final item on consent agenda, 7C, is a resolution approving the purchase of new laptop computers for the Fire and Rescue Department in the amount of $38,881.50. All the equipment repurchased from inside public sector is a piggyback on the State of Florida Master Agreement, MNWNC-124. Funding for this purchase will be charged to the account number 001-1121-513.64-23, with total purchase for the amount fully funded, is fully funded in fiscal year 2020. Those are the three items on consent agenda. Madam Mayor, I suggest they be approved by resolution.
And City Manager Stevenson, are there any... Are there any persons in the audience wishing to address council on the consent agenda? Seeing none of the consent agenda is acceptable, would entertain a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. All in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign? Thank you. Consent agenda stands approved. Item 8A, a resolution approving fiscal year 2020 school grant funding awards. School Support Committee Vice Chair Kingsley Kelly will explain. Ms. Kelly, good evening.
Good evening, council members and mayor. My name is Kingsley Kelly Paratino, and I am Vice Chairperson of the School Support Committee. On behalf of the School Support Committee, we would like to officially thank you for agreeing to increase our school budget, school grant budget. As you know, we look to provide grant funding for schools with projects that have the greatest impact on our kids. And we're confident that we were able to do that this year, thanks to your generosity. At this time, I'd like to move into the grant recommendations that we are submitting for your approval. I believe you each received a copy of the grants and a spreadsheet of the grants that were submitted, and I think there's a PowerPoint up. It's my understanding that you would like for me to read the grant number, the name of the grant, and the amount to be funded. Is that correct? And the school name? Okay. Grant 1902, River Hills, Building Agency and Perseverance Through STEM. Amount funded, $542.59. Grant 1903, Greco, Sensory Stimulation Corner for ESE. Funded amount, $500. 1904, Lewis, Follow the Yellow Brick Road to Real Life Applications. Funding amount, $498. 1905, King, Linking Students with the Environment, $1,000. 1909, River Hills, Developing a Love of Reading Through Rich Text. Funded amount, $786. 1910, River Hills, Technology to Touch Us All. Funding amount, $70.68. 1911, PISO, Real World's... 1911, PISO, Real World STEM Challenge, $699. 1912, PISO Middle, Middle School Matters, $542.88. 1913, Temple Terrace, Self-Correct Yourself into Learning. Funded amount, $900. King, this is 1914, King High School, Voice Recorders. Funded amount, $407. 1915, River Hills, Students on the Rise, $1,000. 1916, Lewis, Home Success Kit. Funded amount, $800. 1917, Temple Terrace Elementary, Conscious Discipline. Funded amount, $1,000. 1918, Greco, Encouraging All to be National Junior Honor Society Scholars. Funded amount, $385. And 1919, Focus, Computer Coding and Robotics in the Classroom. Funded amount, $1,000. As you've noticed, that leaves us with a balance of $4,598.74. Again, our goal is to fund grants that have the most impact on students and schools. As a committee, we've decided to fund the grants that were just proposed with your approval, and then offer another grant application window in the winter when we come back from winter break. Between now and then, the committee will follow up with our schools and discuss how to make their applications stronger and have more of an impact.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. I would ask if there are any members of the public that would like to make comment on this item on the agenda? Seeing none, I'd ask counsel if there are any questions? Seeing no questions, if acceptable, would entertain a motion approving the school grants.
Move to approve.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Councilman Schisler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Having been a charter member of, but back then it was called the School Improvement Task Force, we helped to usher in this grant program. I remember doing the same process that you guys did, and it was very arduous, takes a long time, but never, back then, did we put the time and effort into it that you guys did on this.
Thank you.
I was, it was impressive. The three and a half hours of discussing this went very, very quickly, but you guys took it down. I can promise as counsel, they squeezed every nickel out of they could on this. I think you were also present, Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'm very proud to go along with approving this, and I look forward to the support committee doing this in the future.
Thank you so much. Councilman Ross.
Well, thank you very much. I'd just like to comment briefly on, thank you and to your fellow members, please pass this along.
I will.
I appreciate the fact that you guys obviously take this seriously and don't just say, we have this much money, we're going to dole it all out. And it's much harder to dig in and to really do the true evaluation, even if you don't give all the money away. And I appreciate that you are responsible stewards of the public money and that you take your role very seriously. So thank you.
Well, thank you. Any other comments or questions, counsel? I would ask that all in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the nay sign? Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Kelly.
Thank you very much.
8B, a resolution approving a final replat, SP 19-01, Temple Terrace Apartments Richmond Group. City Engineer Vinnie Carazo will explain. Mr. Carazo.
Greg, good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council members. The resolution I have before you is to approve a final replat, SP 19-01, of Temple Terrace Apartments, also submitted by Richmond Group, also known as Temple Terrace Apartments LLC. So...
Hold on. Are you okay?
Okay. The resolution explains for us the background and what is asked, but I just wanted to point out two significant aspects of this replat. One is the, Temple Terrace LLC is consolidating 35 lots of the eastern half of Main Street into one giant lot. They wanted, they had proposed to build a four-story luxury apartment complex with 200 units. And the other significant aspect is that we are dedicating the park, the gazebo, as right-of-way. So instead of Parks and Rec Leisure Department maintaining that, it'll be the Streets Department maintaining that as right-of-way. So with that, you have any questions? I could answer for you.
Prior to questions from counsel, would ask if there are any members of the public that would like to address counsel on this item? Seeing none, counsel, are there any questions? Councilman Ross.
This probably predate you, but just to make sure I'm thinking about this right, Greg, we platted this up in the little tiny plat when we put it on the market so that we could sell it in any configuration we wanted, and now we're just lumping it back into one. Is that right?
Yes, sir, that is correct. Greg Pauli, Business Relations Manager for the city. In 2017, the entire area was replatted into what some would call a shotgun parcel. That empowered the city to provide any range of sizes to potential investors.
I got it.
This particular investor has purchased everything on Block 2.
Yes.
Lots 1 through 35.
Thank you, Mr. Pauli. Councilman Downey.
A couple of months ago, there was a plan to change the configuration of the street, making it a boulevard leading into the project. So the park now is part of that plan? I understand that it's changing as to who is going to maintain it.
Yes.
But is it part, is the park itself part of the apartment plan? And then we're maintaining the boulevard, or...
The area where the park currently exists will be completely restructured as the, it's going to be city right-of-way, it will remain city property, but it will be restructured to support entrance into the property. The park features, several of the park features, you may recall from a slide presentation sometime last year, several of those park features are going to be relocated by the developer out onto the shoulder areas of B Street. So yes, to answer your question, yes, some of those features are being preserved and relocated, and that is a mutual effort between the two developers that'll be sharing B Street.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments or questions, counsel? If acceptable, would entertain a motion approving a final replat, SP 19-01, Temple Terrace Apartments Richmond Group. Is there a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll move to approve SP 19-01, a replat known as Temple Terrace Apartments.
Thank you, Councilman Chalera. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign? Thank you, motion carries. Next, a resolution approving a contract with Bay to Bay Environmental. City Manager Charles Stevenson will explain. Mr. Stevenson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We've had several discussions in the past about the maintenance of our retention ponds around town. In our last budget cycle, we were able to kind of rethink the way that we've always set up the budget and make provisions that we can at least assign some money to approach maintenance of our ponds. It's one of those things that we've never done, and we're fortunate enough to have been able to get counsel to approve that schedule of values in order to get this done. One of the things that we've talked about for a long time is the pond on 78th Street, and it really had become cost prohibitive for us to go and do anything with this pond. In the last month or so, we've been able to engage a company by the name of Bay to Bay Environmental to come in and give us a reasonable price in order to remove the vegetation that's in the pond and remove the dead vegetation that's underwater. There will be some vegetation that remains, some cypress trees, for instance, or some willows that are growing in there. We're not looking to get rid of all of it, but certainly the majority of what is there in order to clean this pond up. And I know this has been a topic of discussion between the neighborhood and certainly counsel. We've been fortunate enough to work out an arrangement with Bay to Bay in order to get this done and move forward with some maintenance. On top of that, in addition to that, there's a second pond that's located behind Lightfoot that we continually have to monitor and take duckweed and aquatic material out of there. We're proposing to also include in this agreement with Bay to Bay for them to put some aeration in there and kind of clean up that pond as well. We're spending a lot of money on a semi-annually basis trying to take care of that pond. So there is a resolution before counsel this evening to approve this agreement in the amount of $46,750 for some maintenance work and growth removal on the pond on 78th Street and some aeration work to, in removal of some vegetation, not as much as 78th Street, but vegetation on the pond behind Lightfoot. Both ponds are a significant player in our retention of stormwater. So with that, I would make a motion to, or a recommendation to counsel. I'm sorry, make a recommendation. And they had me accept a dollar check yesterday for lunch, so I was there for the day.
Good for you.
No, I don't think so. But anyway, I would make a suggestion that we approve this resolution so that we can move forward. This work is proposed to happen very quickly, and I think everybody would be very happy that that happens.
Thank you, City Manager Stevenson. I would ask if there are members of the public that would like to address counsel on this item? Seeing none, counsel, are there any questions?
I don't have a question, but I definitely have a comment.
Then that will wait until the motion. Thank you, this is only for questions. Are there any questions? If acceptable, would entertain a motion authorizing the city manager to entertain a contract with Bay to Bay Environmental LLC for the maintenance of city-owned and operated retention facilities. Is there a motion?
I'd joyfully move to approve.
And I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. Discussion.
Thank goodness.
I just want to recognize the neighbors who did not stop. All of us have had calls, all of us have been invited out to visit the pond, and specifically, Mr. Woodall, you have become a neighborhood champion. And so for anyone listening out there in the audience, if you have an issue, it may take a while, but please keep coming forward. Thank you very much for your efforts, all your efforts.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the nay sign? Motion carries unanimously, and I do see that Mr. Zapata from Bay to Bay is in the room this evening, and thank you, we're looking forward to the partnership, Mr. Zapata. Continuing on, item 8D, a resolution adopting preliminary site plan, SPR 19-06, for the O'Reilly's Auto Shop located on the southwest corner of Bush Boulevard in Overlook Drive. City Planner Gus Karpas will explain. Mr. Karpas.
Yes, good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. Let's see if I can get my presentation loaded here. Okay, so tonight you have before you a preliminary site plan for O'Reilly Auto Shop. The property owner is Lefton Real Estate, and the applicant is Avid Group LLC. Excuse me, the property is located on southwest corner of Bush Boulevard and Overlook Drive in the downtown redevelopment area. It's currently used as a restaurant and single-family residential site. It's actually a combination of three parcels. The parcel on the north there is where the restaurant is, there's two residential sites. The two northern parcels are going to be combined, that's where the O'Reilly's is going to be. The parcel to the south, the single-family home is going to be remodeled and, I believe, sold. The property, or the structure itself, is going to be approximately 72,000, or 7,240 square foot retail. Again, here's a look at the site plan showing the actual building on-site with the two parcels to the north and then the parcel to the south, which would be redeveloped as the single-family home. They are taking off an existing driveway along Bush Boulevard, putting two entryways onto Overlook Drive. The actual structure itself is, you've got the front-facing elevation along Bush, which is the north elevation. The east elevation is along Overlook Drive, and then you've got the west elevation and the south elevation. Now, this request is requiring 14 waivers, and I'm going to go through the waivers real quick. I kind of skinnied them down on my sheet here, instead of trying to go through them on the slides here, but they are contained on these three slides. So here we go. You've got a waiver from Section 1290, which is the architectural style guidelines, looking to deviate from certain aspects of the required architectural style and design elements. They have a number of waivers from Section 12-291, which is the building frontage and build-to-line standards, to allow deviation from the building frontage and build-to-line standards, to allow for building mass and entryway orientation to the sidewalk and street only on the primary street frontage, to allow for only 45% of the primary street frontage to have building frontage, and only 35% building frontage on the secondary street, to allow blank building walls on the side and rear walls to be visible from the street, to allow front and side street setbacks to exceed 10 feet from the property line, and to allow less than 50% transparent glazing to a height of 14 feet, and to allow non-decorative pavement finishing within the setback area between the building and the property line. That's all the waivers from the building frontage and build-to-line standard. We have individual waivers then from 12-294, which is parking loading areas and parking requirements, to allow parking and loading along the primary and secondary street frontages. A waiver from 12-296, which is street lighting, to deviate from the ornamental sight lighting standards. A waiver from 12-297, which is public and private streetscape and open spaces, and that's to deviate from certain public and private streetscape and open space landscaping requirements. A waiver from Section 12-298, the color palette, and that's to deviate from the colors defined in the approved color palette in the ordinance there. We've got two more here, real quick. A waiver from Section 12-768, which is the tree removal regulations, to allow removal of greater than 30% of the existing protected trees, and to provide less than 10% new tree canopy. And the final waiver requested is from Section 12-1051, required buffering of other vehicle uses, and it's basically looking to allow a loading zone between 26 and 125 feet from the property line to be less than 75% screened from view. Now, when the council is looking at these waivers, the LDC, Section 12-288, lays out the criteria that the council must find, that there are extraordinary and exceptional conditions pertaining to the particular piece of property, that the application of the provisions to the piece of property would create an unnecessary hardship, that such conditions are peculiar to the particular piece of property, that the relief, if granted, would not cause detriment to the public good or impair the purposes and intent of this LDC, and then finally, that any waiver granted shall be the minimum waiver, making it possible for the reasonable use of the property. Now, the staff recommends that the council examine the application and materials for the preliminary site plan and consider the testimony of the applicant who is here, and then approve or deny the resolution subject to the waivers in any condition that the council would recommend. So if you have any questions, I'll try my best to answer them. Otherwise, the applicant is here, and I know that that's a lot of information to try to digest, or a lot of waivers there.
Thank you. I would ask if there are any members of the public that would like to address counsel on this item? Thank you. Would the applicant like to address counsel on this item?
That's okay. Yes, Kami Corbett with Hillward Henderson, representing the development team this evening. I know it sounds like a lot of waivers, but when it comes down to it, it's really two categories of waivers. They're architectural and site design waivers, and they're all interrelated, and I think it will be helpful when our planner, Pete Penza, comes up and walks you through the site plan to help you better understand what we're doing. I would also consider them, they are waivers, but we consider them alternative design standards to, because we have complied to the extent feasible where we can, and Mr. Penza will walk you through that and explain to you why we can't meet the letter of the code, but how we're trying to meet the intent.
Thank you.
Would that, I'd like to have Mr. Penza come up.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Peter Penza, I'm an ICP certified planner with Avid Group, planners, engineers, and surveyors. The site, as staff pointed out, is a, three parcels, one of which is commercial currently, two of which are residential. The two residential lots are non-conforming by their zoning. The reconfiguration of this will create a conforming residential lot so that it meets the code lot width and acreage requirements. And then the remainder of the site is the commercial parcel, which is obviously what we're talking about tonight. The site is very narrow, it's, and very small, it's only point seven seven acres, and it's one hundred and forty-one feet wide. Staff read through the list of waivers, and we provided the written list of waivers and justification for them, both as a separate standalone document as well as on the face of the site plan, so I won't go through those in detail, but rather summarize it for you for the sake of brevity, and then you can answer any questions you have on that. So in addition to being a very narrow site, it has got double street frontages, so there's standards related to that. There's a corner clip for the intersection to provide for the turning radius through there, and then a larger corner clip that is a city drainage easement, and I'll try to point those out for you. It's this area here, and the drainage easement comes through like that, you can see the line on your, on the handout that I gave you. That easement, because it takes up a significant chunk of the corner, causes the building to be unable to be put up at the corner, so by necessity it has to be off-corner. If it was to be placed where, so that it's not an easement, but as far forward as you can, it provides so much excess wasted space, both to the north and to the east, that the site became undevelopable, because then there's no room to provide parking either on the west side of the building or on the south side of the building, and bring it up to the street like the code has anticipated. So instead, we propose moving it towards the western lot line in order to provide, as you can see, just enough room for providing a drive aisle and parking. In addition, both with meeting with city staff and with DOT, the city code prohibits access onto Bush Boulevard and DOT, so they would not approve a driveway there even with a variance. So we're required by code and by DOT to take access from Overlook, and in order to get a delivery truck to enter the site and circulate in and out, we have to have the configuration, and we show that truck turning movement on the plan. We did look at moving the building to the east and try to circulate around the west side, and it just didn't work. You couldn't get the turning movements to work, you couldn't get the truck to get out of a drive aisle so that it could be unloaded. So instead, with this configuration, it allows the tractor-trailer to parallel park along the side of the building. They primarily do one large delivery, so it's most, ninety-nine percent of the time, there's not going to be a truck there. When it does stop, it'll parallel park along that side. The, what they call the dealer door, or the entry, is on the rear of the building, and the dumpster enclosure will provide a visual screen from that as well. That'll be architecturally consistent with the building, so it'll help hide that delivery In addition, some of the things that we did to mitigate and provide for something to offset above and beyond in compensation for these waivers is to increase the landscape buffer along Bush Boulevard to ten-foot wide instead of the two to three-foot required by code, to do six feet on the east side of, on Overlook, to provide buffering and screening along there. We'll be installing a sidewalk on Overlook where there isn't one today. It's very constrained because of utilities, but hopefully we'll be able to get a sidewalk through there. And then Bush Boulevard, because it's been widened over time, there is no excess green space in the right-of-way, and that's the reason why we're asking for the waiver from the open space and public gathering aspect of the code, because there is none in the right-of-way. The sidewalk's right at the property line right now, and as it is, there's utility poles in the middle of that sidewalk. So that green space that we're providing does provide that contrasting open space, green space that's not in the public realm already. Although the plan doesn't depict it that way, the crosswalks that will go to the front door that's centrally located on Bush Boulevard, those crosswalks will actually be a decorative pavement, so they'll contrast with the pavement that's needed for vehicular circulation and tie into the brick sidewalk theme that the city has adopted along Bush Boulevard. So that'll help delineate the pedestrian connection to the street and provide that visual contrast for safety for people that are walking. And then obviously, the reason why we're asking for that waiver is for the parking spaces in the drive aisle, because they need to be heavy wear surfaces for vehicles to use them, and we'd rather put the emphasis on the pedestrian circulation. And then the last thing I wanted to touch upon is, we will comply with the city sign ordinance. Monument sign is proposed at the large green area at the corner, at the intersection, obviously outside of the drainage easement, and then talking with staff, I wanted to provide, this is the gateway into the city, the western property line is the city limits with the city of Tampa and Temple Terrace, so similar to the sign that's at Temple Heights Drive in Overlook, I don't know what you call that sign, but there's a vertical monument that's there, and we're going to provide an easement to the city to be able to install one of those to match. And with that, I can answer any questions you may have.
Council questions? Councilwoman Downey.
I do have a question. I'm glad to see on this drawing, the landscaping, because, you know, on the site plan, there wasn't any, so that's nicely done. My question is, and I realize that there are trucks going down Overlook now, delivering to the existing business, but these are large trucks, and are they going, apparently they're going to have to go back south on Overlook to leave? So they have, they can't, they can't turn around and get back out onto Bush Boulevard?
No, they will come, and I know it's hard to read, especially since it's kind of ghosted on there, but the way the truck deliveries will come is they come in westbound from Bush, south onto Overlook, come to the southern driveway.
Right.
Come into the site, pull forward, back up to parallel park, and then they'll pull out the northern driveway, out into the intersection, and go eastbound on Bush. They will not go south at all.
They will not go on Overlook?
Correct.
Okay.
The only extent will be along the property frontage in order to get to that southern driveway. They won't head any further south into the neighborhood.
Okay, that's, that's good news. And the second question is, how much property is there, and how much landscaping is there between the stormwater pond and the new improved house, the residential?
We're showing six foot of landscape buffer itself, but then the pond, I don't have the exact dimension, but, I mean, the driveway's thirty feet, so there's forty to forty-five feet from the property line to the back of the building.
So the lot stays consistent with the rest of the neighborhood?
Yes. Yeah, and like I said, the lot, the lot that will remain is actually being widened so that it meets the city's minimum lot width and square footage, so that it complies with zoning.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? If acceptable, would entertain a motion adopting the preliminary site plan SPR nineteen dash zero six for O'Reilly's Auto Shop located on the southwest corner of Bush Boulevard and Overlook Drive. Is there a motion?
I move to approve.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion, council? Councilman Ross.
Do I have a suggestion for the city manager or staff to consider? It's up to you to do this, but I can envision in the future that we may get people who live in the neighborhood just south of here on Overlook in that neighborhood complaining of increased in traffic volume, and my suggestion would be to put the device out there for a week or two now before anything changes while the restaurant's still open, to get a baseline count of how much traffic's coming up and down Overlook as it is right now, so that if we do get a complaint two years from now, we can say, yeah, you're right, it's gone up fifty percent or a hundred percent, or no, it's not gone up at all, you know, we have the numbers from what it used to be. That way, if we do experience a significant increase in traffic, we can probably do some things to mitigate that, like you can't turn out of there and go south, you'd have to only turn and go to Bush. But I wouldn't want to do that preemptively, because if you live down there and you want to go up there to get windshield wipers for your car, now you've got to go all the way around down Fifty-Sixth Street and back into the neighborhood. So I wouldn't want to do it to fix a problem that we don't know we have, but if we had a baseline number, we would be able to articulate to the neighborhood, no, you think you have more traffic, but you really don't, or, yeah, you're right, you do. Just a suggestion.
Councilwoman Downey.
It was mentioned earlier tonight that there's going to be a pedestrian crosswalk, right, on Bush Boulevard? Is it actually, is this the site, or?
Here he comes.
They're asking about the hawk on Bush Boulevard.
Hi, Troy Tinsch, Public Works Utilities Director. Yes, there's going to be a hawk at that location at Overlook, it will traverse across and dumps the pedestrians right out in front of the proposed building.
Thank you, Mr. Tinsch. Are there other questions? Councilman Shalora.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The selfish side of me does not want to approve this site plan, because I don't want to see Lupton go away.
Me too. I was having a hard time with it.
But having said that, I really want to direct the attention to the council that, you know, although we have very stringent CRA guidelines, sometimes these guidelines are not realistic. This is a attractive project. It certainly enhances our city. A lot of times, folks get pushed away because of the guidelines. They don't want to bring in a team of attorneys and risk and roll the dice and say, will this pass or not? I certainly want to, the vote hasn't been taken yet, but hoping that the council will support this. I think it's a step in enhancing our city and revitalizing and maybe setting a standard to show that we are flexible. It's certainly there's a use that comes in that is a attractive use to our city and serve our residents. So, you know, with that, I think this is a great project. I think it certainly will revive that corner, that corridor. You have the public storage going in across the street, you have this coming in, the driveway on Bush Boulevard has gotten closed off. I think it's, I feel this is a huge improvement, and I certainly will be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Shalora. Councilman Schisler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to echo the comments from Mr. Shalora. It's a good project, it's a great, it's sad to see the Luptons go. I know we've all spent many hours in there through the years, but I think it's also indicative, it also indicates, it shows our willingness to make the changes that we need to make in order to accommodate the growth for the city. These are important, and I've heard so many times through the campaigns and through the years that, well, a city's so hard to do business with, and I think this is a good indicator of the city is willing to do what it takes to get the job done. I will support this.
Any further discussion, council? All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay sign? Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations.
Welcome to Temple Terrace.
Next, the first public hearing and reading to adopt ordinance fourteen eighty-four, approving the zoning reclassification of eleven four zero seven North Fifty-Second Street, RZP nineteen dash zero one. The hearing is now open. Council members, please disclose any ex parte communications on this issue.
I have had none.
I've had none.
I've had none.
I've had none.
Thank you. City Planner Celeste Lau will explain.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and city council members. Can we bring the presentation up? Okay. Oh, it's on. Okay. So tonight I will be presenting item RZP nineteen dash zero one, which is a zoning reclassification for a property located at one one four zero seven North Fifty-Second Street. A little background information for the site, like I said, it's located along North Fifty-Second Street directly south of the Terrace Ridge Plaza, where the Publix is currently being constructed. The current zoning is commercial office, or CO, as shown on the right-hand side of the graphic in that light pink color. The proposed zoning is planned development, or PD, which is shown on the left-hand side of the graphic in the purple color. The site is approximately one point seven two acres and currently has an existing apartment complex on there with fourteen units. Under the existing commercial office zoning, these are the allowable uses, which include single-family homes, professional office, medical clinic, funeral home, and some government uses like schools and libraries. The proposed PD would limit the uses to residential, mainly multifamily residential and business office. In the blue, you can see I've outlined the four existing apartment buildings, and then the purple outline shows the proposed new apartment building with the red showing the proposed office space within the building.
Which way is Fifty-Second Street from here?
It's going to be on the, the west side, so the left-hand side of this graphic.
The left?
Yeah. So you see where those curb cuts are? It's leading out to Fifty-Second.
Okay.
The proposed use for the site is a three-story apartment. Like I said, there's currently fourteen existing apartment units on the site. This new apartment building would propose twenty-four new units, bringing the site to a total of thirty-eight units. It would include ground floor parking as well as the eight hundred and sixty-four square foot business office, and these are just some of the elevations of the building And this is a rendering of the proposed new building for the site. As you can see, you can see the ground floor parking as well as a portion of the office space located on that image, it's towards the right-hand side.
So, I'm sorry.
Yep.
I'm having trouble with this, with the backup material in these pictures, figuring out which way I'm looking.
Okay, so this is, if you were to be standing on Fifty-Second Street, you're looking east onto the property.
So the business portion of this is going to be behind the apartment?
No, it's going to be on the first floor of the apartment. You see where that black car is?
Yeah.
Yeah, so right next to it is where the office building would, or the office space would be.
But I thought you said I was looking east from this picture.
Correct. You're standing, so if you're standing on Fifty-Second Street, you're looking east, and then that's where the property is. I don't know.
The office is southwest corner.
Correct, yes.
Yeah.
So.
Well, it's just with them, right.
It's, it would be the applicant's business office.
So it's in the back of the, if it's, if I'm looking east?
Yeah, it's what Councilman Chambers said, it's on the southwest corner of the building, the proposed new building.
Right.
Do you, I can go back to the, you see where?
But I can't be looking east. I mean, I was a boy scout. I can't be looking east if that's the southwest corner, but never mind.
I don't.
This is you.
The southeast corner. If you're here, you're looking east. Okay, just carry on.
So the property's also going to be taking advantage of the business intensity zone overlay, which would allow for a twenty-five percent increase in residential unit density. To achieve this overlay, the site is subjected to certain development standards, like a minimum of two land uses. So for example, it would be the multifamily residential and the business office, shared driveway to reduce curb cuts, structured parking, connection to a multimodal corridor, and being located a quarter mile from an existing or planned transit stop. On June twenty-eighth, the planning commission found the request consistent with the comprehensive plan, and there are no further objections or comments from the city's development review committee. Therefore, city staff recommends that council approve the ordinance for RZP nineteen dash zero one. That concludes staff's presentation. The applicant is also here.
If the applicant or their representative would like to address council? If the applicant or their representative would like to address council, this is the time.
Put this right here.
Okay. Put that up there. Let's let everybody.
Sure. Mayor, my name is Evilo Ivanoff from Capital Point, the developer. So I wanted to thank you all for letting me speak here tonight. As you all know, I'll be answering some of the questions and concerns that were brought up in the meeting back in August. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend and I apologize for that. So, once I've completed my presentation, if there are any additional questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. Is there the presentation?
Yeah, it's already up there.
Oh, perfect.
Is it on?
All right, great.
At least that way.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, and then you want to point it towards the left.
So, the purpose of this slide is to give you a highlight of the current properties that exist on 52nd Street. So on the left-hand side, you can actually see the apartment complexes and the single-family homes that currently exist there. And on the right-hand side is our proposed project, which is the Mila Luxury Apartments. So as you can see, there's a significant difference between the design of what currently exists there and what we're proposing. And we put in a lot of effort and a lot of thought into designing this building. And so, with that being said, I hope that it becomes obvious, now that we've added this 3D rendering to the submission, I hope that it becomes obvious that truly what we're trying to, what we're trying to propose is directly contrast what's currently there on 52nd Street. So to give you an overview of the Mila Luxury Apartments, it would be a 24-unit apartment building with two-bedroom apartments. And the way that we've designed this building is we've made sure that we've incorporated a lot of premium and sort of luxurious features to the building. And I've listed several of them on the bottom. But I wanted to highlight a couple of them because the reason why we incorporated those into the design was so that we can attract that young professional or that university student that's down the street at USF that may be looking for those additional amenities that hasn't been, that they don't see in this section of the town. So one of those things is every single apartment on the top floor would have their own private rooftop patio. And so you can see on the spiral staircases, you would be able to access that. And I've included a picture on the right-hand side, or in the middle there, with what one of those rooftop patios would look like. In addition to that, we've also incorporated a lily fountain, which will be implementing in our stormwater retention pond. And the reason why we wanted to include that is because we thought that it would complement the buildings really nicely. And especially at night, once it's lit up, it'll actually create a really nice ambiance in that we think that the residents would really appreciate. As you may already know, Celeste mentioned, there are four existing buildings on the property as it stands right now. And we'll be updating those buildings alongside the Mila development and we'll be doing a facade improvement on those buildings. And I've included a project in Naples on the right-hand side, just to show you, just for visual purposes, some of the facade elements that we'll be incorporating into that update. And I just want to be clear, we're not changing the footprint or the height or anything on the buildings. We're just changing the facade. And we're doing this simultaneously with our Mila development so that we can make sure that we achieve consistency with that modern and fresh look that we're trying to achieve between the two properties. There are two additional benefits that I wanted to bring to the council's attention. The Hillsborough County Planning Commission did a cursory transportation assessment. And based on their analysis, they determined that the current land use as it stands on the property, you would have an average, a higher average peak hour, peak direction trip with the current land use than you would with what we're proposing. So again, just to highlight, our proposal would actually positively impact the community by lowering traffic. And second to that, when we were planning our proposal, we wanted to make sure that the new residents coming in wouldn't overload the local schools. So, as you can see on the chart on the right there, there is sufficient capacity from the elementary level all the way up to the high school level to accommodate for any additional students that may arise from our Mila development. So that concludes my presentation. And just to sum it all up, I just wanted to emphasize the fact that it has never been our intention to create more of the same, as it was mentioned in the previous meeting. We're looking to build a beautiful building, a modern building, that will create a fresh look. And especially with its proximity to the City Hall Building, I think it would be a great project to point to when you have visitors from other cities or other counties to show them, hey, these are some of the improvements that are happening in the city of Temple Terrace. And also, I think ultimately what we're looking to do is, we hope that this project will encourage other owners and other developers in the area to do the same as we are and help Temple Terrace grow in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd ask if there are members of the public that would like to address council on this issue. If you'd please step forward, state your name and your city of residence.
My name is George Southworth. I live in Hernando Beach, Florida. I have grown up in Temple Terrace and I am the developer of the two adjacent properties immediately south of this proposed complex. I believe that the zoning for this property is exactly what it needs to be when I developed my two office buildings. And when the office buildings were developed back to the south or to the east of this and then further south, that they were developed as residential office buildings. They're single-story. They have basically, you know, truss roofs. They have residential shape. They fit the neighborhood. They fit the context of Temple Terrace. To build a three-story office building and apartment complex with a modern facade in the middle of this is just insanity. Okay? 25 feet from the face of my building is going to be a three-story vertical structure with a flat roof and a completely out-of-context architectural design. It makes no sense. It doesn't fit what I've always perceived Temple Terrace to be. It certainly doesn't do anything to benefit my project. It'll do nothing but lower the property values. I don't perceive this area as to be a very good choice for a luxury apartment complex. I'm more concerned about what it'll actually be occupied by. But another thing I might mention is that when the original project to the east of this one was developed, it was a little Waterford project, and I believe that, my memory recalls, they were deficient parking spaces. But the original owner of this land agreed that they would provide those spaces on the property when they expanded their current office project. They've now sold this property, I suppose, and this developer has purchased it. But I guess those six parking places and the commitment that that developer made to the city just go away. All right? Because there's no interconnectivity, there's no provision for additional parking spaces to serve that complex provided on this property. I would have looked at buying that property, but that, you know, it's already a small site. But it could have developed a nice little office building, just like the one I have next to it there, still can. All right? To put residential apartments there is just not compatible with the area. It's not compatible with my understanding of Temple Terrace requirements when I develop my property. I own both those office buildings. My personal businesses are in them and I don't think this project fits. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Tom Roberts. I live at 11406 North 52nd Street, directly across the street to where this complex is being proposed. My main concern has not changed from the last meeting we had on this, but it's going to be the increased traffic on 52nd Street. Also, I don't know what the timetable is for construction to begin if the rezoning is approved. We're already putting up the construction trucks going into the old Publix where they're rebuilding it, using the entrance off 52nd Street. And we're looking at, and I believe you said another 24 apartments going in, which will be more people and more cars coming out onto 52nd Street. And right now, 52nd at times can be a raceway. And so my main concern is the traffic and the safety of the people out there on the street with the traffic. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts.
Good evening. My name's Pat Roberts. I also live at 11406 North 52nd Street. We are directly across from this. I wasn't aware that there was also going to be this rooftop deal going on and all that. This is just not the area for this, okay? We had brought up, my husband and I, we had brought up the problem with the traffic the last time this came up. And we, you know, the chief, your chief of police has contacted Tampa and they had contacted my husband. They said, we're going to check into it, check into it. We spoke to two police officers while they were sitting over at Ryan's and I said, what are you planning on doing about this? He said, well, what we think you should do is that you sit out there and you tell us when there's a problem with the traffic, with the speeding. So we're supposed to do their job. We're Tampa. This is Temple Terrace. There are, logistics of this is not good for that top of the street, okay? If there was any place else and it was all Temple Terrace, it was all Tampa, it would be one thing. We have to deal with what's going on with y'all and what's happening with Tampa, okay? It's just crazy over there, you know? And even with Publix being closed, even though the traffic isn't as heavy as it is when Publix is open, okay? We still have heavy speeders coming through there and we have no way to stop them. And nothing has changed. It's just, there's a smaller amount of traffic, okay? But once that Publix opens again, it's just crazy over there. We have a lot of walk, you know, pedestrians and a lot of more cars. And, you know, we had one person, in fact, he's disabled, that works for Publix and he had an accident. I don't know, the truck was going too fast or whatever, but he fell off his bike. He fell into our driveway and it took almost like an hour. And it was one of your police officers, the one that responded on our side. And then finally, Tampa Fire Department was able to make it. And I think all of this took about an hour and a half to get through. It's different being there. If, like I said, it was one government or the other, that would be fine, okay? But having this rooftop deal going on and three stories and it is just too much for over there. It's, you know, I've lived there for 20 years and it's, everything's kind of calm, you know, with all the residents and stuff. But you start bringing in all these extra, he's saying there's going to be probably younger people coming in, we're going to have more partying and more trouble, okay? And I am 100% against this. I don't care what y'all do with it. I know that it's not going to make me happier by bringing these people in. So, you know, if it was something that was going to be commercial, like the other, what the other gentleman was saying about the duplexes that are there, that's great. Something that's commercial, that is on a smaller venue, that's great. But not all those residents coming in. We can't handle it. You know, we're on well and septic over there as it is on our site, those two houses. So, you know, please reconsider this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts. Is there anyone else that would like to address council on this? Seeing none, would the applicant like to respond to the concerns that have been raised?
Yes, thank you. The only things that I'd like to address with regards to those concerns, I would say that the traffic, as I mentioned in the report, the Hillsborough County Planning Commission had done a traffic analysis. And given the current land use, the traffic would be higher than what it would be with what we're proposing. And with regards to the speeding, there's not really much that we personally can say about that or do about it. I think, I think that's a great point and maybe it's something that we can work with the two cities, the city of Tampa, city of Temple Terrace and their police departments to maybe speed bumps or whatever it is. But in the case of our project, I think it's, it's something that wouldn't, our project would not increase that problem or contribute to that problem, simply for the fact that nobody's really driving by their property they would be driving in. So the speeding, we would not be contributing to the speeding in any way. And for that reason, I think, I know change is a bit different, difficult for a lot of people to accept and I totally understand that. From our point of view, we truly have the best interests of the community and the residents and the neighborhood. And we're trying our best to build something that would be, although it is modern and it is a little different than what everyone is used to, I think it'll bring a new, fresh feel to that street and to that neighborhood. And like I said, with its close proximity to the City Hall, I think it would be a very nice piece to point out moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, I'd ask if you have questions of the applicant or staff. Ms. Downey.
I have questions of the applicant. So, this is already residential.
Correct.
So it's already been introduced because you have the apartments that you're going to model.
So, and I may stand corrected, but the current buildings that are there right now were grandfathered in from a previous time. So, for that reason, although the property is zoned commercial office, they were grandfathered into that.
But currently living on the property?
Yes, yes, correct, yeah.
Okay. And so, thank you for explaining the traffic because I was going to bring that up. So, right now, the existing buildings have not been maintained in a good way.
Right.
We can all agree.
Yeah, so we've always had the intention of acquiring the land next to us and eventually building something nice that will not only increase the values of the properties of all the neighbors, but also the asset that we own currently as it stands, 52nd Square Apartments. So naturally, in that kind of sense, you want to take advantage of economies of scale. So when you're building out the new project, we would simultaneously, at the same time, contribute to 52nd Square, update the facades at the same time. Of course, you know, we're not going to have our 1983-built buildings on the left and we've spent all this money and all this effort into this building right next door. It just wouldn't accomplish what we're looking to do.
And the reason it's three stories is because all the parking is below.
Correct, yes.
So it's not adding parking. And plus, the way people are now, there are an awful lot of people who are taking transportation, taking the bus, taking bicycles, what have you, even though it's Fowler Avenue, it's a little scary to think about that. So I just wanted to make sure I understood. So this is an existing apartment complex and you're going to add apartments to it and the office space that you have is really going to be for the apartment complex.
Correct.
So it's not going to be bringing customers into that.
No, it would be for our own primary use and for the, to service the residents.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Ross.
I have a couple, sorry, I have a couple of questions. I'm scratching my head trying to figure out how you're going to add 24 apartments and reduce traffic.
So this is, this is based on the Hillsborough County?
No, 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 I know where you got it, but I'm having trouble figuring out how you can add 24. Now, I'm thinking, is this, if you built it out to the maximum density that it currently is, is that what the comparison is?
When we do plan amendment, Mark Hudson and Planning Commission staff, when we do analysis for plan amendments, which this was associated with one in the numbers that the applicant is quoting, we do analysis based on what is existing land use is, existing future land use is and what is being proposed by the applicant, not necessarily what is sitting there today.
So what it could be.
What it could be. So with its land use, which is office-institutional, and what if you built out the maximum FAR with the entitlements that are there today, it would generate a certain amount of traffic. And I realize that is, you know, commercial uses to a great extent and they generate, tend to generate more daily trips than a residential property. So by converting it to residential, those trip numbers actually go down.
I understand.
But that's based on building both, under each land use scenario, building it to its maximum potential.
I understand, thank you. That's what I suspected, but you did the statistics thing with your slide there. You made that into something that isn't really quite. I mean, if you were going to build this out to its maximum density, yeah, you're doing what you propose would be less trips. But you made it sound like you're adding 24 apartments and you're reducing trips, which is mathematically crazy unless all those apartments are going to be empty.
Right. No, I mean, to your point, I completely understand where you're coming from. But I think, as Mark mentioned, the point here is that there are two options. If we were to accept the current land use and we were to come in and instead of building this residential apartment building, we would build out a commercial space, we would actually be generating more traffic. And of course, this is a concern that the residents do have. So I just wanted to point out that, in fact, we are helping the community in a positive way.
Okay. I have a couple more questions, not to beat you up here.
No worries.
So, the existing buildings that you're going to redo the facade, are you going to keep the current tenants that are in there while you work on the outside of the building?
Correct. So we would be only touching the outsides of the buildings. That wouldn't affect the current residents that are in there right now.
Okay. Because my, that goes to my next question. Because my, that goes to my next question, which is, your proposed complex is, looks nice, and you consider, and you're calling it luxury apartments, and it looks like it is luxury apartments.
Correct.
It looks like the stuff they're building on the north side of Fowler, except it's, so it looks nice. But the apartment buildings that are there now, let's just say they're not luxury apartments, right? And so, it seems like there's a little incongruity within your same project here. Are you going to really up the game on those two buildings and make those into some, you know, is the rent going to go up so that you have like people here? Or are you going to have two buildings that are 1983-ish kind of one price point, and then this next door, which is another price point?
Right. So, naturally, we've, we've thought about this, and I think it's a really great question because we asked ourselves the same thing. But the fact of the matter is, is that over the years that we've owned the property, we've seen an increase in demand from young professionals and from university students, exchange students who, who have shown interest. We rarely have vacancies, I'll tell you that much. So, when we do have vacancies, we, we've seen recently, students and exchange students and young professionals come to our door. But the problem is that when they, when they come, they're, then when they see the property, they're sort of taken aback at the fact that there isn't really anything modern or luxurious in the area. So, to your point, I think we won't have any problem whatsoever turning around the units. And whenever we have vacancies, I'm sure that there are going to be candidates at the doorstep waiting to move into the apartments, given the fact that we're modernizing the existing buildings and, and also building out the, the new buildings with the fountain in the back and, and the picnic areas, the rooftop patios. I think that will create a much nicer community aspect of those two properties. And that's why I was saying, we wanted to do them together so we can stay consistent on that modern and fresh feel when it comes to the two properties.
I have one more question. I promise I'll shut up and let somebody else ask.
No problem.
But my last question involves the third floor roof, top patios.
Right.
We've had similar projects before us in the past where they were, there was a drastic change in elevation, like, like Mr. Southward talked of, and although mostly it concerned residential, not so much commercial. But some of the concerns in the past have been, you know, I'm a one-story, single-family home, and now, close by, I've got something three or four or five stories tall. So, I mean, people are looking right down into my yard, into my house. I mean, you can't help it. It's not that you're a peeping tom, but you're standing three floors up, and when you look out, you're looking right down on somebody's. Now, this is a little further away because you've got the parking lot before the street, and then you've got the width of the street. So, you've got some distance built in. I don't know exactly how much. But is there any kind of a buffer or a possibility of a buffer? Because I do understand if you live right across the street, like the Roberts do, I mean, it's not, like I said, it's not like you're necessarily trying to be a peeping tom, but you're looking out, and there's only these people looking out their window, and they're up on the roof, and they're, you know, they're out there at night, and they're playing their music, and they're smoking a cigar or whatever the deal is, and they're right there.
Right.
You know, so how do you buffer that? Is there any way to buffer that?
I think, I think there's, first of all, the area, we're lucky enough, I guess, in a way, this is the way that we're sort of combating the fact that we have commercial properties all the way around us, with the new Publix literally, you know, right next to us. So, this is one of those ways that we can essentially be a transition piece into a residential neighborhood. So, I think, to your point, although there are a couple of properties, you know, across the street, I think that's, that's quite a, quite a, quite a buffer, especially with the trees around and all of that, it'll create a really nice buffer, and it won't necessarily be a direct trajectory straight down from.
Are there, are there trees along? I don't think there are now. Are you planning to put trees on the west side of this?
And, and that's the, another thing that we've been talking with the staff, is we were planning on speaking with the arborists and making sure there are several trees on the property that we want to keep, and that will create that, that, that buffer that's, that's there. And if we need to, we would be more than happy to plant trees to create a buffer. And, you know, one of the ideas was to create the hedges in the front of the property to sort of create a, a nice encompassing barrier to the property.
Well, if there's room, can, I don't know if there's room. I'm trying to visualize this in my head. Can we make this a condition of approval if there's sufficient room? Because trees would solve the problem. I mean, if you had even a medium-sized oak tree, the canopy would be right in between the Roberts' house and the roof of this building. That, that would solve the problem and add to the tree canopy. It's a win for everybody, but I don't know if there's room.
No, no, sir, you may not.
Yeah, you can definitely make that as a condition of approval for this item.
Is there room?
That I'm not too sure. I would, I would leave that to the applicant to see if there's room for that.
Can, can we consider that? Because I think that would, that, that would solve some of the, I mean, it's not going to solve everything, the whole issue with traffic, but we can't not develop just because we're afraid of more traffic. But we can, if it's feasible, maybe build that in as a condition to, because that's a real, I mean, if I got to tell you, if I, I don't want three stories across the street from me either with a rooftop.
Time for questions. Councilman Schisler.
Yes, there's questions for, two, two questions for staff. My memory serves me correct, this project, similar to this, has been before us before, correct? Back in August?
It didn't have any site plan.
Pardon me?
Didn't have a site plan.
Okay. I'm not sure why, refresh my memory, why was this rejected before?
Yeah, the, so the only item that you heard was for the comp plan amendment, and the applicant has amended the application, and you never heard the rezoning application, which is what I presented tonight. We wanted to show what the applicant has amended and brought back to give you a chance to have a better view of what the proposed development is.
Okay. This is a totally unrelated question. Has staff done any calculation on the incremental tax impact from this property tax value?
I, no, we're here.
I didn't.
Councilman Chambers.
Okay, this, tonight, we don't have a site plan, we have a concept plan, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. We have a, we, right, we have a.
Point of order.
Right, it's a rezoning, so we don't have a site plan, so we still control the site plan.
Correct. Yes, he would still have to come back with a site plan application for the site.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions, counsel? Councilwoman Donahue.
Well, I hope I'm not out of order. I'm prepared to make a motion.
No, we're on questions right now.
Okay. I didn't see any others, I'm sorry.
And I don't want to be out of order either. I want, I can either do this now or after the motion is made. I just want to make sure that I provide my legal advice before you make a decision so that there is no, hopefully, no chance of any requests for rehearings. So, I do have some legal stuff that I want to tell you before you make your decision.
Are there any other questions of counsel?
One question for the city staff. So, Mr. Chambers reminded me of something that, thank you. So, if we approved this, then we would, so would the appropriate place for the tree to be a condition of approval be later at the site plan approval, or would it be now?
It would most likely be appropriate during the site plan.
Okay, well, that's not all bad, because that gives you guys a chance to look and make sure there's room and come up with, and you know what, or at least some of our, that's not all bad.
I'm here, I'm the city community development director. Part of the site plan, he has to provide the landscaping plan, and we will bring it back before you so you have a chance to review it, to add additional buffer entries.
So, that would be, no, not now.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chambers.
Any further questions? Councilman Schiller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I expressed my opinion at the last meeting, and I am not in favor of what's being brought before us because of the direction that it can take this street. This picture's pretty, but I look at, this property's been owned by the same owner for the last three years, and it's, I've seen a lot worse, but it's not in the greatest of shape.
Time for questions.
I, I'm, I'm looking at the use that can go here based on the level of maintenance. And if you look further up this street, I've seen the apartment or the, the office uses that are approved directly adjacent to this, which is more the direction that would give it a, a softer transition to the homes that are just to the south. And I've been looking, sitting here while you guys are asking questions on Google Earth, and you stroll down that street, there's some beautiful homes there. And I also look at, you know, across the street, some of the apartments, and, you know, we're looking at rezoning. And the question is, do you want to bring in more multifamily, or do you want to keep it as commercial office as it is right now? The commercial office is a much more stable environment for this road. It's a much less traffic environment, which you probably get little to none on evening and weekends. So, as I look at it, if I lived across the street, or if I lived just south of this, I would want as little traffic as possible as the intensity of Fowler Avenue begins to be filtered and transitioned into a, a residential area. So, I am not, I, I don't feel that a rezoning change to multifamily will be the best use for this property considering it's surrounding. Thank you. So, I won't, I'm not going to, if there's.
Are there any further questions? Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. If the clerk would please retitle of the ordinance, and then we will go to City Attorney Shashan.
In ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, order, rezoning 1.72 plus minus acres of land located south of Fowler Avenue and east of Fifty Second Street with an address of 11407 North Fifty Second Street from zoning classification commercial office to plan development PD for RZP 1901, providing for amendment to the official zoning map of the city, providing severability and effective date in repelling all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith.
City Attorney Shashan.
Thank you. This applies to all rezoning applications, and what I'm basically going to read is just a reminder that had been sent to counsel back in July when counsel had considered another rezoning application. With rezoning applications, city staff are considered expert witnesses, and any testimony from lay witnesses must be fact-based, not opinions or based on speculation, in order to be considered competent evidence and to be legally, and to legally support your decision. An assertion that property values will go down if a rezoning is granted must come from expert testimony, not a lay witness. An assertion that the development upon the rezoned parcel will create flooding is not a reason to deny either. Increased traffic is not a legally sufficient reason without a traffic study having been performed or without some special circumstance or location. Some proposed uses will clearly generate more traffic than others, and what may be too much of an increase depends on the circumstances. The courts have called increased traffic a condition incident to urban living. With regard to citizen opposition, you may keep in mind the weakness of the specific objections mentioned above. And in a, in Corn versus City of Lauderdale Lakes, the court held merely because citizen input may not be a sufficient basis for a rational government land use decision in every instance does not mean it can never be a sufficient basis for such a decision. In most cases, it will be. Whereas here, citizens consistently come before their city council in public meetings on a number of occasions and present their individual fact-based concerns that are rationally related to legitimate general welfare concerns, it is not arbitrary and capricious for a city council to decide without a more formal investigation that those concerns are valid and that the proposed development should not be permitted. I know that sounds conflicting, but such is the law, so.
Thank you, Ms. Shashan. If the ordinance is acceptable, would entertain a motion to approve the ordinance on first reading.
I move to approve the ordinance.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion.
I'd like to make the comment at this point.
Councilwoman Donahue.
Thank you. In light of what Ms. Shashan just said, I, I hope I'm going down the right path. Things are changing. The world is changing, and right now, we're looking for housing. And right now, we're looking for housing in different blends. In many of our communities that are building right now, there's an absolute decision to blend different levels of income, different levels of, of age. And while that is not the goal of this project, it sounds to me like it could, that could happen. If we said, well, we, we've never built anything like that there before, then there wouldn't be an armature works, there wouldn't be most of Seminole Heights. So, just like we said earlier, we're starting to realize that we're not a cookie cutter city, and we don't ever want to be a cookie cutter city. So, my thought of this, after looking at this project, which I realize is not the final site plan, but it would be a nice transition to go from Fowler Avenue to, you know, a, a nice new, modern look, which then, who knows what would happen as you go down and realize, I'm, I'm not trying to step on the, on the what it could be mode. But that's why I support this. I, I see this as innovative and thinking outside the box and bringing something to our city that we haven't had before, which hopefully will encourage others to do the same.
Thank you. Are there any further discussion? Councilman Schisler.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a little torn on this one. The, the design is beautiful, it really is cool, okay? But I don't know that it fits in that area, and that, that's my concern. And thank you, Ms. Shashan, for your comments, because I have said in the past that if you think we're going to do something wrong, then you need to jump up and down and shake your head and everything, shake, shake your hands and everything else. I don't like the concept, I don't, I mean, I like, I like the building, I don't like where it's going to go. And however, I realize that we're not going to be able to make a fact-based decision by listening to the neighbors. And that's an unfortunate situation in this particular case, as was the last case, where we had this, this same type of issue come up. I know we were against the comp plan change back, back in, I think it was August, and for the same reasons, I'm really against the same situation now. However, the law ties our hands, and that's unfortunate, and that's a problem. I wish it was another way we could do this. I wish it was another way that was more amenable to, to, to the project development, but I don't think, I don't think there really is. And I don't like it, but I think, you know, we, we almost have no choice. We have to support it, unfortunately, or risk being in violation of, of standard or current court interpretations.
Further discussion, Councilman Chambers.
Yeah, I, I agree with Mr. Schisler. I'm torn also. But I just completed a class with Florida League on new elected officials, and we were really hammered home with this, go by the facts. And what I've heard tonight, I, I'm going to support the zoning re-change. However, I'd like to really urge staff to listen to what counsel's concerns have been up here tonight. If this is approved, to listen to our concerns and work that in the, the concept, or the site plan, please.
Thank you, Councilman Chambers. Any further discussion, Councilman Schiller.
Madam Mayor, I still feel that this zoning change is inconsistent with the use, and the facts speak for themselves. Look at that block. I'm looking at the block from Google Earth, and just about three-quarters of the block from Fowler Avenue all the way down is non-residential office or commercial. The only multifamily is way down the street once you get up the white way. So, I'm looking at the trend, the use and the zoning, that's a fact, that's in place right now. Look at it. I'm not speculating, I'm not assuming, it's not my opinion, it's a fact. And just look at it, because you're going to go in and out of mixed uses in an area where a trend is going one way. The city has approved these uses for a reason. There is not, with the exception of these apartments, there is no other residential use.
other residential use on that block until you get to the apartments that are at White Way. You have the Public Works Building, you have the hospice, you have the Montessori School, you have the Waterford-type project right next to Publix, you have the office buildings that the gentleman came up and spoke about. I mean, there is no residential use or multifamily use on that block. And the other side of the street is Tampa. It's a whole different animal. So I'm looking at how it relates to the uses in Temple Terrace based on the facts that are in front of me this evening as I sit here and look at the Google Earth of this block. So it basically tells me that the trend, the vision of this block, has gone to commercial, not multifamily. So my decision, as I stated earlier, will continue to be the decision that I do not, based on the facts, multifamily is not consistent with the current uses that are in place at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Chalera. Any other discussion? We will now call for the vote. All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign?
Nay.
Three to two, motion carries forward. The ordinance will appear for a second reading in public hearing on Tuesday, December 3, 2019. Counsel business. Is there any carryover business from our previous meeting?
I can-
Seeing none, we'll move to new business. We do have a request for a shade meeting. Ms. Shashan.
Just before we get into that, I believe that staff had one issue to bring up with regard to this. Could be considered old business, could be considered new business, but they wanted to, if you want to get up and ask about that, they want, considering that the comp plan amendment was heard in August and denied, we wouldn't be talking about this at all if you voted no on this one. But because it was a positive response on the rezoning, I think Ms. Lau has something that she wanted to bring up with regard to next, not the next council meeting, but the one after that.
So with the rezoning, there can't be a zoning change on this property unless the comp plan has also been amended. Their future land use currently is commercial office, and the applicant would be required to rezone it to residential 18 to allow this PD zoning and for the proposed uses on the site. So on August 6, you, the council, voted to deny the comp plan amendment. And we would, since this rezoning was approved tonight, we would like to bring back or have council reconsider the first hearing and first reading of the comp plan amendment again.
So I believe what's being asked for is that council make a motion to bring back the comp plan amendment question for a future meeting, because it's necessary to be done along with a rezoning.
Correct.
Is there a motion to bring this back in the future? I feel very uncomfortable that it's, that this was not part of our official agenda. There will be no action taken this evening on this. Anything that is brought as new business should be introduced from the dais, not from staff. And as new business is coming forward, if it's coming forward and has not been properly noticed, it would be a two-thirds vote tonight. That would be required for anything to go forward. If you are requesting that something show up on a future agenda, I think that's something that is procedural, that would be under the auspices of the city manager and not need a vote, because it's a procedural item that happens, and the trigger is pulled based on the vote this evening. But staff should not be introducing new business. That is something that happens from the dais per parliamentary procedure and Robert's Rules of Order, which is our adopted way of doing business in the City of Temple Terrace.
Well, as I said, it could fit under old business, but we sort of jumped, we sort of jumped past that-
Old business is also introduced by those who are elected and on the dais, not by staff.
What's normal in a situation like this, as happened in August, is a comp plan is heard the same night as a rezoning, so that an applicant doesn't have to come to two meetings. However, the reason why you didn't hear the rezoning last time is because you denied the comp plan. Staff didn't want to put everyone in the same position this time as having both things come up, if in case you voted no on one. So, but since you voted yes, then we're, the comp plan isn't there, you know. So now, because you've denied the comp plan in the past, they're simply wanting a vote on, to get this onto an agenda. It's necessary to have the two things happen. So they're asking that you simply vote on having it come on some agenda in the future. The city manager will have complete decision-making on which agenda to put it on.
And since it's a procedural item, I'm just questioning the need for a vote at all. It's a procedural item that needs to happen. Mr. Stevenson controls the agenda. It's an item that has to happen as part of the planning and not-
Just do it.
Help me understand the parliamentary procedure on this, because it's, this is not appropriately happening.
It's a good question. I don't know that I've ever been asked this question before.
I'm just trying to run us the way we have adopted.
Yeah, the rezoning, and your point on procedure is well taken, and I think dead on. The rezoning has got to come back for a second reading. So what I suggest we do is let me and the attorney and staff work on when to bring this comp plan back.
Perfect.
We will get it all worked out so that the sequence is correct. Again, we've got to go through a second reading on this rezoning. So I think we can procedurally cover what we need to cover, in recognizing your point.
Very good. Is counsel comfortable with that? Very good. Is there any additional, okay, so we have a request for a shade meeting under new business.
Yes, thank you. As the city attorney, I am advising council at this public meeting that I and the city's litigation counsel desire your advice concerning the litigation that is pending in the Leah Family Partnership versus City of Temple Terrace case to occur during a closed attorney-client session. This is being asked pursuant to Florida Statute Section 286.001. The subject matter of the meeting shall be confined to settlement negotiations or strategy session related to litigation expenditures. We are hoping to have the shade meeting on the date of council's next regular meeting.
At five?
Is counsel amenable to a meeting?
At five. My question is, is it set five or earlier?
Will five o'clock be sufficient?
Do you need more time?
I've discussed this with the city manager. I know we have another workshop scheduled at that time, so we were thinking that we could, that half an hour would be sufficient, and that we could do one for 30 minutes. And I believe the other one, I'll leave it up to the city manager.
Yeah, I don't know that the shade meeting will take more than 30 minutes to accomplish. We had previously scheduled one of our regular CRA meetings, just for, to bring to council an update on the status of CRA. We could probably do that within 30 minutes. So if we can do a shade meeting at five, and then maybe the CRA, we can push back to 5:30. I think we can accomplish everything we need to do in that timeframe.
Is counsel amenable to that?
This is December the 3rd.
Yes, sir.
So we're gonna meet from 5:00 to 5:30 in a shade meeting, and then 5:30 to 6:00 at CRA stuff.
That would be my suggestion. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Or my motion, whichever one. No, I'm just kidding. Sorry about that.
Keep trying.
Very good. Confirmed.
Thank you.
Is there any additional new business to come before counsel?
I do have one.
Councilman Ross.
Just for the city manager, and I know, I don't expect you to have a solution to this or Bob or either, but I noticed that we, seems like we have technical difficulties with our video or audio broadcast more often than not. And I know that you've taken some action to try to work through this. Is there a solution to this? Are you guys still working through this, or what's the-
Councilman Ross, we're still trying to work through it. I just got notice this evening, that we have a video this week, but no audio last week. I think we had nothing. So we have, we have troubleshoot this issue. The issue is on Spectrum's side. It is not on our side of the wall, if you would. I know last week, Spectrum didn't broadcast, but yet people that had Frontier saw the meeting. So it kind of, out of deductive reasoning, we understand that the problem is on Spectrum's side. Tonight, I was notified, we have video but no audio. So, and that happened once before here in the recent, recent meetings. So we will continue trying to reach out to Spectrum and find out what the problem is. Quite honestly, I've got the problem in my house as well, with Spectrum's signal coming in and out.
I got it fixed. I've been on the phone with him the whole time. It should be fixed now.
Mr. Brian Hill has pulled a miracle off, and he's got it fixed. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you. Is there any additional new business to come before counsel? Councilman Chalera.
I just, this is the appropriate time to discuss the IOC discussion we had in the workshop, and give staff the authorization to allocate the money that we got for the funding this year to roads and sidewalks. Obviously prioritize them as, as they see fit. That would be my, my motion, so they would have it in place for the 21st.
Very good. We have a motion, and we have a second discussion?
Yes.
We'll go to Councilwoman Downey, then Mr. Steve, or Councilwoman Downey, Ross, and then Mr. Stevenson.
I would like to know if you would amend your motion so that you would include signs, because they had sidewalk streets and signs. And I hate to leave signs out, since that's was part of the 2020 new signage.
And there's, there's plenty of roads and sidewalks to fix and signs we could look at next year, but what, what kind of signs are we talking about?
Well, do you want to address that?
I believe Ms. Downey was speaking about street signs, traffic control signs.
Yeah, these are not street identifiers. These are no, no trucks.
Right, so stop signs or-
I would assume that's a minor expense compared to the overall, so-
It would be.
I would have no problem modifying that to incorporate that. But obviously, the emphasis is on-
Streets and sidewalks.
Sidewalks.
We have a motion. We have a second. Further discussion? We will now go to Councilman Ross.
Yes, I have some questions about this, because we've gotten different information. And I mean, I don't, I don't have object to the spirit of what we're trying to do, but my questions are purely practical and logistics. We've been told tonight and in the past that if we wanted to modify the projects list, no big deal. We work up the projects, we approve them, they take them to the IOC for review. The IOC can, we can modify this list at any time. That's what we were told in the past in September, and that's what we've been told again tonight. But then we got conflicting information that said, well, in theory, maybe that's the case, but they don't meet again until August. So I, I'm not, I'm confused. If we do this, I don't know what happens next, because it doesn't sound to me like the IOC is gonna change their meeting agenda Thursday to hear our new concept plan. It sounds like that's already happened, and they're just meeting Thursday to approve yea or nay. I don't know that, are they gonna open this back up for us to do another presentation and say, wait, 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 we've, we've changed what we want to do? It didn't sound to me like they were gonna do that, that they were just meeting to make the final approval. So if they don't do that, what happens? What if we, what if we say yes, and now, I don't know what happens. It sounds to me like we're left hanging here or something. Does anybody know?
So the IOC on, on Thursday, they were going to hear from HART. So HART will be presenting their plan. And then the agenda is that we would all get up individually, ask individual cities and the county, and ask if there are specific questions about the plan as presented. And if there are none, then we would segue into a motion to certify the plan. I don't know that there's an opportunity for us to amend the plan at that time. I believe they, that there's also a meeting in January. I think timewise, it may be very difficult for us to pull together the information required in a day and a half, two days, to get ready for the 21st, because in theory, you also have to approve that. We can't take something to the IOC without an approval from our governing body. So I would need to bring a list of streets forward. You would need to certify that, yes, you accept that as an expenditure. I would then take that to the IOC.
Councilman Schisler and then Councilman Chalera.
Thank you. You know, there's, there's so much confusion with what the IOC is doing, how they're operating and so forth. I believe that they were to meet on a quarterly basis, which means they would meet quarter one, be in January, quarter two would be in April, May, then again in August. I find it inconceivable that they're not gonna meet again until August.
That's my understanding.
There's absolutely no way. I mean, that's the way we're operating at HART, that there was gonna be, you know, quarterly meetings for them to make the presentations, and any changes that needed to be made accordingly. So I, I think we have the time. We don't have to do anything for today after tomorrow. There's no way that can be done in a practical manner. But it gives till January, you know, to amend whatever we want to do and move forward with it. Again, we're not gonna know until, until maybe June or July how much longer that's gonna continue. So it's, it's, I think we have the time. I, I, I understand the, the recommendation by, by Councilmember Chalera. It's not a bad idea. But I don't think that we have the gun-to-our-head, hair-on-fire urgency of having it done in two days, because it's not gonna happen. Maybe we need to just get a clarification on when they're going to be meeting again, because one person said this, one person said, let's get a third party involved. Maybe somebody down there.
Councilman Chalera.
I don't have any comments.
Councilman Chambers.
Okay, so to, to clarify maybe what Mr. Chalera is asking, is this on, we're submitting $255,000 worth of projects Thursday, correct? And is it your intention to also submit projects that we already have in the capital program to spend all the 1.8 million that we could get this year, if the estimated comes in, but still submit the projects that we heard tonight for 2020?
Yeah, I left that at staff's discretion. I mean, that was-
Okay, so-
-the discussion we had in the workshop.
Okay, so that's the intent of the thing, to, to spend all the money that we could get this year, this year, and submit the, the projects we have already on the list of road projects we have in our capital budget.
Or earmark it. I mean, you don't necessarily have to spend it. It's earmarked. You allocate it to that, and it can be modified next year when you come back up in January or whenever the meeting is.
Councilwoman Downey.
The only reason I'm not gonna support it is that you brought up some really great points. We can't just send you off and say, okay, take our whole list and run it by them Thursday. If you take what you were planning and what you've already presented, there was nothing on the immediate list that any of us objected to. And then in January, when you go back, you, you should have the opportunity to take the 2021, if you want to, you can take it in 2020, January 2020. So I, I'm afraid that we're going to, we're gonna end tonight with you not having a plan for Thursday. And that means we can't start planning, we can't, we have to wait until January to do anything. And I'm sure you already have, you know, you, I'm sure you already have the engines roaring to go. So that's the only reason I'm not supporting. I get what you're, what you're aiming at, and I, you know, I always agreed with the city manager that we were going to go slow this first go-around, and then, like you said, next year, really lay it all out there. So that's the only reason I'm voting against this motion, is that I think what the plan you have in place, the plan you've already presented to them, is a sound plan, and we can adjust it in January. But we should move forward with what we know and what we have for this meeting, this week.
Is there any further discussion? Councilman Ross.
Yes, ma'am. Well, that was kind of my question, is, is why do we need to scrap what we have? Why can't we let him go forward with the $255,000? We didn't object to anything. It was all, you know, it was all reasonable projects. Some of them I liked. Some of them are, you know, I mean, pavement paint. But, you know, some of them need to be done, the bicycle enhancements, the, the, things like that. Nothing wrong with anything that we approved. They're all, we approved them previously. But I also agree that I want to take a bigger bite of the apple. I like, I think, $255,000 worth of projects. When we're getting in 1.8 million, we could do a little better. But I don't see- 1.8 million, we could do a little better. But I don't see why this has to be an either or. Why can't we go forward with the $250,000 and then direct the city staff to go back and develop more projects to take to the January meeting? This doesn't have to be an either or. This can be a, a both and. Why don't we do both?
The chair would ask that, as I understood it, that was the direction and the, the motion that was made by Councilman Chalera. So I would ask Councilman Chalera to restate his motion because there seems to be some confusion. I believe what you were challenging us to do was to ask for that bigger bite of the apple as soon as possible. So if you would please...
I just want to clarify a couple of things. Number one, I didn't say, take the whole list. That's, you aren't listening. Number two, Mr. Tench, you said these projects have to be approved before you bring them forth to this group. We didn't approve the $250,000. You brought us to the group. So you're telling me...
We did.
We did, with the budget.
We did, through resolution in September.
The $250,000?
Yes, sir.
So you said, we're going to get $2 million or 1.8?
Yes.
And I'm only spending $250,000. Am I spending the rest?
Correct.
I, I'd like to see that in a minute because I don't recall that.
It was part of the budget.
So it might have been buried in the budget, but it wasn't in an IOC discussion. So I'm just hearing different things. As Mr. Stevenson said earlier when we spoke, Mr. Tench said as well, well, you guys have to make a motion so I can bring it to the IOC. Mr. Stevenson said, well, we can use like the road project, the 600,000, at least that's one project we can incorporate into submitting on the, you know, coming up at the meeting coming up. I know what I heard, guys. I know what I heard. Go listen to the audio. I'm not, you know, sitting here going crazy. And then I'm hearing totally different stories. I mean, people putting words in my mouth saying, submit the whole list. False, not true. You know, I hear that, you know, we're, we're, we have to approve some before it goes there. Well, I don't remember a motion saying, we're going to approve 250 out of the 1.8 million. I don't remember that. You buried it in the budget? That's sort of, you know, I'm not saying to you, it's just, it's not clear and accurate. So my original intent was that the city, if they have certain projects, not the whole list, that they want to bring forward in roads and sidewalks, to incorporate it and submit it with the request. That was the motion. And that's a bigger bite of the apple. Okay? So that's the motion I, that's what I was discussing. Nothing more, nothing less. So if you guys want to support that, great, but that's what, you know.
Can you say that again? So I still don't understand what the motion is exactly.
If we have 1.8 million, whatever it is, okay?
Okay.
The city's only asked for 250,000 or whatever they asked for. If, since the others have used up at least more than 100% of their allocated funds, I said, why don't we take advantage and try to do the same thing and make a bigger ask, take a bigger bite of the apple. If we see projects that need to be done pretty immediately, include those in your ask, roads and sidewalks in your ask coming up. That was, I left the discretion. As I said, I'll leave it up to the staff to make that decision, but take a bigger bite of the apple on roads and sidewalks.
Count, our, our city manager Stevenson and then Councilman Schisler.
Madam Mayor, again, during the budget cycle, we actually created a whole new fund in order to put this money in and start divvying up this money. The schedule was created by creating a new fund. So I know that we had discussed this in detail. I, I don't know that this was buried in, in, in the budget. I remember specifically addressing this. Now, I do think that it is imperative that we start finding out when exactly the IOC meets. And I think that, that's, that's, that's probably a good starting point. It was my understanding, as Mr. Schisler alluded to, that they meet on a quarterly basis. And if that's the case, then we've got plenty of time to adjust this thing. It has certainly been my, my impression all along that we have the ability on a quarterly basis to go back and adjust our project and our expenditure. So...
Councilman Schisler.
For the purpose, for the purpose of getting this kicked off the ground back in August when we put the budget together, we created a new fund and decided to spend $255,000 initially on the first year. We've got a lot of planning to do and a lot of, you know, we're, we, me, I've put our public works utility department under the gun to get our lift stations rebuilt that we've been talking about for years. We don't need one of those to fail. I think that is a priority with us. Fixing roads and streets, I understand, is certainly something that we're, we're required to do as a public entity. But having our lift station fail and taking these guys off, their eye off the ball, I think is the wrong thing to do. That's why we set it up to ease into this new program. But we can, I think, two things that need to happen. We need to find out when IOC meets and confirm that to counsel. I don't know that anybody up here, we've heard different variations of when they meet. I don't know, I don't know, other than what I heard months ago about their regular meeting schedule, but they have been a little wishy-washy in some of their deliberations.
I think our representative tonight shared the great challenge and concern he had, sir, was they had a goal of a quarterly meeting, but it is a high-level committee and it has been very hard to get the appropriate number to be able to, to do business as a quorum. That really does tie our hands. My concern is, we have an opportunity or a window to do more, but we haven't asked for the money and we're not going to be able to use it. And I might be the only one in this room that has had the experience with government of use it or lose it. And everyone else has asked for over 100%. We haven't. And we might say, oh, that couldn't happen, couldn't happen. The money's in our bank account. I have seen money pulled out of bank accounts. IOC is, we, we know how terribly written that legislation was. IOC is making rules as they go, creating rules as they go. So I don't think with integrity anyone can say guaranteed, if we don't use the money, we won't lose it. I don't think we can say that because the IOC has haphazardly made rules as we go. The legislation is not clearly written, not delineated. And I, for one, would rather have as much allocated as possible. If we can't get to a project because we're doing pump stations and other serious things, at least we've got the money on the books and it's easier to roll a project that's on the books over to next year than we never defined anything. So Temple Terrace must be doing great and not need it. I apologize. I stepped on Councilman Schisler's toes. So it's Councilman Schisler and then Councilman Chambers.
No, I understand what you're, what you're saying, Madam Mayor. I, I was going back to the, to the commentary that we've got the money in our bank, okay? I've not seen where they take it back, but that's, you have more experience than I do with that. So if that, if that's, if that's a danger, they've been taking it back, then yeah, I would agree we need to, to allocate it. But just because we allocated it doesn't necessarily mean they still can't come take it back also. So I don't want to, I don't want to overtax the staff. Again, we've, we've been, you know, harping for the last year and, you know, congratulating the staff for the last year that, yeah, this stuff's getting done. We're getting, we're moving forward this project and that project. You reach a point of saturation and we, we could create more problems than we, than, than we try, than we fix. So I don't want the city to lose any, any of the opportunities. I don't want the city to lose the funding. But, you know, we need to, we, I agree with Mr. Stevenson. We need to find out when the, the IOC is going to meet again. I think somebody says it's meeting in January. I thought Mr. Perrier said it in January.
If they get a quorum. If they don't get a quorum, they're not meeting.
Then they're not meeting. I, I'm not sure.
Councilman Chambers.
A question. If the motion passes tonight, does it mean you do anything different Thursday?
Yeah, you're asking for more money. You're going to ask...
He's saying no. Does that mean, if the motion passes tonight, that means tomorrow staff will work on presenting, getting together a new list of projects to present it Thursday? Or is it no, nothing happens one way or the other, you're still doing the same presentation Thursday?
Our presentation has already been done. It's not as if we have to make another presentation. But let me, let me clarify something. We're not going to lose any money. They're going to distribute the money. We're just not spending it. And it will be in a bank account, you know. I, I, I would hate to think that somebody's going to go to our bank account and take money out.
They can do a demand back. Depending upon the rules that are made, there can be a demand back of unspent funds.
Madam Mayor, what I'm saying is, is we're still getting that $150,000, you know, in our bank account. It's not as if, because we're not asking for more money, that we're not going to get the money. Okay?
And, and this, and we keep talking about asking for money. This is not an ask for money at all. This has to do with the IOC essentially approving projects. And all they can do to us is simply say yes or no that our project list fits within the approved projects under the, under the, the ordinance. So that's, it's an approval of the projects, not an asking for money.
But if the projects are not approved, you cannot spend the money. And if you allocate the money without a project approval, you are not in compliance.
Right. And our projects, our projects require less approval than, say, Hart's projects, because we are among the, the small group that's getting less.
But you still need to have the projects, you still need to have the projects approved.
As long as they're in, we need to just have the projects in a list. And so I guess the question is, if you're wanting to add a project to the list, ask staff, can that project be added to the list before Thursday? So it doesn't matter about the money.
I think that's the motion we've been discussing for the last 25 minutes.
Okay, so that's it.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Thank you. Is there any further business to come before counsel? Then we will turn it over to city manager Stevenson for his city manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Really, the only thing that I've got here is, as a matter of protocol in our agenda, our rules and procedures, what I'd like to propose or suggest to counsel is that we add a number 12, being city attorney's report, so that Mrs. Shown has the opportunity on a regular basis to give us an update under a different item rather than undermine. Just a procedural thing that we have to, I have to get permission from counsel in order to change those rules and procedures. So that's really my only ask this evening. That's all I have.
Counsel, is there a motion to that effect?
I make a motion to add a number 12 to the agenda for...
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate with aye. Opposed, nay sign. Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Stevenson? Anything else to come before counsel?
I have a question for Mr. Stevenson. The homeowner who brought us the information about the semi-trucks and the large trucks in the park, will you just let us know what happens with that, please? That is a real concern on ordinance as well.
We'll, we'll address it out of, we'll begin a conversation about it and, I guess really, in a way, we touch above.
Any further business to come before counsel? We stand adjourned.